Okay. We've got some sound. Okay, all right, it's my pleasure to call this December twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of Board of Fire Commissioners, South King Fire and Rescue Order.
You need to end with yourself.
This is the meeting in person and virtual. All commissioners are present, in person.
That's beautiful.
All right. Commissioner Fuller, we give you some pledges.
I invite the agents to rely on the United States of America and to do the republic or understand one nation under God in this whole, and the liberty of justice for all.
Okay. All right, we have two sets of minutes to approve. If I could have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes of November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the regular meeting of November twenty-second. Second, then.
All right, motions have been seconded. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Hearing none, Mr. Chairman. All right. May I have a motion and a second to approve the special meeting minutes of December ninth, two thousand and twenty-two?
I'll move approval of the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes.
One second.
All right, motion and a second to approve the December ninth minutes. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Hearing none, Mr. Chairman.
Can you just go back now?
All right, Commissioner comments. Let's start with the Commissioner.
I hope everybody has a happy Christmas and a happy New Year.
Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I also wish everybody a Happy New Year, two thousand and twenty-three, and I hope everybody had an eventful Christmas holiday. And I'd like to take a second just to recognize Commissioner Fuller. Commissioner Fuller was elected the President of the King County Fire Commissioners Association for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. So, that's a plus.
Thank you. I didn't either. I didn't make the motion. That was the nomination. Sorry, Bill, you're gonna be a hard actor. You didn't hear the train whistle going? All right. Commissioner Burger?
I have none other than to repeat what has already been said. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Fuller.
Happy New Year.
All right. You can stay here. Happy New Year, everyone. All right, are there any public comments? All right, hearing none, Commissioner Committee reports. I don't think we get any.
Got one.
Okay.
The policies and procedures, can we recommend that they be passed on the amendments or revisions that are presented tonight? One of the recommendations, one of the revisions was recommended by the auditor during the last audit. That's it.
I was wondering, did you amend some of that?
Yeah.
Mark, does that both pieces?
There's two pieces.
Section fifteen and such.
It should be the whole book.
Yeah.
The whole guidelines, you haven't approved the updated ones that we sent out.
Yeah, so we gotta add these to it, then.
Yeah.
You made a motion?
I would make a motion to approve revisions to the policies and procedures outlined in these fifteen and. Fifteen and eight, yeah.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second, thank you.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second made to approve these changes to the commissioner guidelines. Any comments, questions?
A lot of credit for being able to do that, but it's still early for putting up with Mark. Number's meetings, it's been fact and force, but it's worthwhile to go through and understand some of the history behind some of the things that are in the Bible, all those things that could be changed today. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments, all in favor of approving these changes to the guidelines, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Hearing none, Mr. Chairman. Okay, resolution six twenty-four, can we have the chief read that please?
Happy to do so. Resolution six twenty-four, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue, also known as King County Fire Protection District number thirty-nine, King County, Washington, adopting regular meetings, regular meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty-three. Adopted at this regular Board of Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue, this twenty-seventh day of December two thousand and twenty-two, the following commissioners being present and voting.
Okay, could I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number six forty-four?
Mr. Chairman, I move resolution six twenty-four.
Okay, has been a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Hearing none, Mr. Chairman. All right. Resolution six twenty-five.
Yes, sir. Resolution six twenty-five, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue, also known as King County Fire Protection District number thirty-nine, King County, Washington, regarding the adoption of the IFC permit fee schedule. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue this twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand and twenty-two, the following commissioners being present and voting.
Okay, could I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number six twenty-five?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to move approval of resolution number six twenty-five, and in so doing, I want to commend Assistant Chief, Division Chief Kevin Cross for that excellent staff report that came along with us explaining all the very detailed changes and rationale behind each of them. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Please first.
Okay, there's been a.
Everybody knows she's here.
Has been a motion and a second, any comments, questions, discussion?
I know, I received an email from Commissioner Thompson, and I want to address some of those things. He talked about the fireworks, he talked about fireworks in two different places. And you bring up a good point, that we could add displays to the firework one, that's displays. The other one is for storage. We don't have anyone currently that does that. We have had storage of plastic caps and things like that. So, the ones that's explosives, including fireworks, that's storage of the, I have no problem with adding the firework displays, so that it's very clear between the two. That was one of the questions you talked about. And let's talk about, we're adding a reinspection fee, as I explained in the process, because we have some businesses, because there is no penalty, that, yeah, we'll get to it someday. And we have staff going back six, seven, eight times, and it's just, it's cutting into our day. And there's our hope, we never collect one of these fees. Most of ours are dealt with in a pretty reasonable amount of time, but Commissioner Thompson did ask a question. Sometimes there are things that are higher issues than others, and they need to be corrected faster than other things. But to be fair to our businesses, what we want to do is we want to guarantee at least two weeks a time, so that we can't, well, we did both your reinspections in seven days, and now you're paying this fee. We may choose to do reinspections quicker than that, but we won't issue the fines until we pass those benchmarks. So that someone can't say that, you know, that we're treating it differently and so forth. The other thing, or was there any, you asked, um, yeah, we get to the other fees we collect, you know, the construction permits and that kind of stuff and so forth. One question you had was what fees do the city collect for us? They collect new construction fees and that, but the other thing they do collect that we're seeing a ton of right now is solar panel installations, because they are construction fees. And the city of Des Moines has been collecting the hundred and twenty that we give for that, and then giving us that money. City of Des Moines will start doing that on January first of this year. We've been talking to them about that. We have been collecting it, by the way, for this last year, which just adds another layer and causes, quite honestly, confusion with people getting solar panels, because they paid a fee to head away, now why am I paying another fee? So, we took the mall we had with Des Moines, and now we're, people paying that and head away. So that'll make it easier for the process. And then, like, I kind of, there's a short executive note here and so forth. I think most of it made pretty sense. We did raise the fees, as you saw, from eighty to ninety and so forth, but I did raise the fifty dollar one, because we want, we took out that twenty-five percent, which, when we went with streamlining, they're like, you're the only department we know in the country that's doing this. So they had to create a special code for us to do that and so forth. And then, by far, the biggest one was the mall, taking it from a thousand dollars down. For all of us that have lived here for a long time, we know the mall used to do car shows and fire department, all of these things. And so what I was told by retired Chief Goodell was that that thousand dollar fee covered everything that happened during the year. But the problem is, the mall hasn't operated that way in probably ten years. And they have complained about this fee the last two years. So, staff had talked to me, and I said, okay, let's find, let's get it back where it's reasonable. And then, you see, we have this special event fee at the bottom, if they do something special, we'll treat them like they're available. So, I know the mall will be very glad that that fee is changed. Unless anybody else has additional questions or concerns.
Kevin, do I need to amend the motion to make a change for fireworks storage? Or is the wording?
I think if we just change the fireworks to firework display.
Fireworks display, well, I.
Yeah.
I will amend my motion to say fireworks display on that hundred and twenty dollar fee, I think.
And thank you for bringing it up this afternoon. I saw the email and read it, and I said, yeah, I, because, and like I said in my first comment, we're trying to make this easier for the fire code, you understand? They don't know the fire code, they don't know, right? So, when we listed out fewer in our last example, we get questions all the time, and staff gets a question, why are you charging me this fee? We have to pull out the fire code, and it just, it was way above their heads. So, every fee that's listed here is a fee that we issued this year. So unless someone brings a new business or something new in and so forth, it should be much easier for the business to be that way.
So, what are we gonna do with the person that is denying compliance?
Well, I hope it is a level one. In the past, we have, there is a citation book in my office that has been used twice in twenty years. In fact, the other staff said, do we have one? So, yeah, I was showing to me, if this hasn't been used. Our hope is by having these hundred dollar, three hundred dollar flat fees, once they hit certain benchmarks, that will be deterrent enough. If we truly do have a building, it's just be complete noncompliant, we'd have to work with the building officials and so forth, because, yeah, we have this piece of their building, but really, it's the cities that have the bigger say in provoking things and doing things. Luckily, we've never had to do that and so forth, so, but yeah, but that's really, as in, I understand, I'm still learning this office and this job and all those things, but from what I understand, when things are that serious, we have to work together with our building officials and so forth. And both cities have been great about.
Kevin, is that, is that both operation and construction, or just construction?
Well, construction's a little more, because we have a say at the table when they're, when they're applying to the building, we have our voice and our chances, say, hey, this is not compliant with this and so forth. Our biggest concern has been more with, because usually the cities and us line up pretty well together and say, if we're not signing off on this until we address this issue, you know, we either go with what says or find the happy mean we both can live with. I think the issue we're really having is with the IFCs, but with the operational stuff. It's somebody's out here who, just for whatever reason, is being not compliant. That's where we're seeing most of our problems.
So that doesn't require the building officials?
No, no, no. And like I said, we honestly hope we never collect a single fee from anybody. Our goal is, you know, that, yeah, that people fix their stuff, and we move on, and everybody talks. But we really, there's been worry in the past that we could charge an hourly rate, but then you have to track that, and how, this is just much cleaner, it's much simpler. And so, and what we'll do is, we'll set up in our streamlining program to where now, when people get their, when they get a first reinspection, they'll be informed, hey, you get one more free than after that, this is the fee schedule to get this fixed. And we believe, because, I'll be honest with you, when we talk, when I talk to the other fire marshals around us in the zone, they were all shocked that we don't have some fee, because I, we might be the only one who doesn't have some type of fee schedule when you have the noncompliant businesses, so.
We, there were a number of weeks or visits, I don't have my top of it, the number of visits, how many?
It's two weeks, at least two weeks between, so they have at least three days before, and you have to have a few being placed. And then, one thing that we've talked about, and it goes back to what Commissioner Thompson kind of hinted to, we've had times, so let's just take fire line panels, where we know for a fact, they're just not available. We're gonna use some common sense. If someone can't get something, it's not their fault, we're going to take that into account, so.
We're recovering more money just when you get, when you go past five.
Well, when you get past two, yeah. You, the inspection one, or inspection three and four are a hundred dollars a piece, or anything past four is three hundred dollars every time we visit. And once again, it still have to follow the two week span and all that, so, I mean, like I said, we are not, you know, I wish that, I think it'll be successful if we never collect the fees.
Because what we're going for is voluntary compliance.
Absolutely.
We're not trying to be bad heavy and.
Absolutely.
Beat the fire code over there.
And fortunately, I was just looking, I mean, we, you know, we have about three thousand inspections we do, and that ball, but somewhere between three thousand, three, two hundred. We're talking a handful of them that are really falling in this category, where they're just being noncompliant.
And that's a case where we, we can appeal to either city's building official, and if it's egregious enough, make the case for them to pull their business license. That will get their attention, Kevin, so.
I know, when I was working for the city, well, actually, in the county fire marshal as well, the twenty-five and a half years with the city and stuff, I only wrote two citations. You know, and I inspected a lot of buildings, you know, and stuff, because you go with the attitude of voluntary compliance, then you get more fees with honey.
Yeah, absolutely. And the plus, the way we're doing now, is we all built in the streamline, so, by streamlining their fee process, what we do with everything, they do all the fucking for us, they do everything for us, so we don't feel any of those issues at all.
Good job. So, I amended to, Mr. Chairman, I amended the, my motion to include the word display on the fireworks. I don't know if we got a second to the motion.
We need a second to that.
Do you agree to that?
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve resolution number six forty-five with the addition of displays on next fireworks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Hearing none, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Administrator team report.
Most of the team is on, enjoying some well-deserved time away. And we gave everybody a pass on the administrative team reports this month, so unless you have some questions, it'll be pretty brief.
So, how about the winter event that we had, the ice event and snow event and stuff like that, what was the impact?
Thank you, Mark, I was gonna ask the same question, given what happened in Buffalo, I certainly hope we didn't encounter that.
We had a minor accident involving one of our fire apparatus. The damage to the fire engine was fairly small. Up in Des Moines, it was engine three sixty-seven, if I recall. And other than that, or as damage to our vehicles and that sort of thing, from the ice-related event, nothing.
Like, it's good.
Then we were able to respond in a normal manner, just by.
Yeah, I think it was, I haven't looked at the numbers, typically they'll make those available, but I'm sure the response times were up a little bit due to the road conditions, but given what we had, at least out in this area, pretty significant there for a while, so, kudos to the crews, they slowed down, and they got where they needed to go.
Do we provide traction devices for the troops?
Yes. Oh, oh, for their own personal use? No.
Might be something the safety committee might want to look at. They, so when they're out on the roadway, doing their business, they're not slipping and falling and getting hurt.
There were no injuries, no personally.
Not that I'm aware of.
Only supposed to happen once every ten years.
Yeah, but there's no global worries on that.
Chief Van Valkenmerge just sent me a text, he said, no injuries, no areas in the district that we were unable to access.
No, no district.
No issues with accessibility. Good job.
All right. DEI? Sharice, are you out there?
I am, hello.
Hello, you're on.
All right, great, I'm gonna do a quick screen share here, although I know we have this document in the packet, for those of us that are online. We're just gonna go over a quick one through of our strategic plan and some updates on where we are thus far and what we have coming in two thousand and twenty-two. Give you a moment to read through our mission and vision. So, this mission and vision is specifically to our DEI efforts. This mission and vision was created with a DEI retreat, so some of our core leadership in the DEI realm at South King Fire and Rescue. And then, it was vetted through our ambassadors committee, which is made up of both ops side and firefighters. So, I'll give you a moment to read through it, and then we'll talk through the plan to help us achieve this mission and vision. Following, go ahead.
Question at the end of, at the end of vision, what are we talking about when we say that by accountability?
Yeah, so we want to make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable to our mission and vision, right? So not only have we created a strategic plan and put some of the pieces in play, but there are also certain accountability measures that are in place. So, this was created based on the OHA, our DEI retreat, our station visits, obviously the institutional knowledge that comes from all of our leaders, as well as some voices in our community, right? And one of the things that we heard over and over again in the OHA was, not only do we want, you know, updated policies and practices and more training and development, we also want some accountability measures. So, one of those things is our ambassador committee, right, holding us to our strategic plan, making sure we have boots on the ground, and also those voices of what is going on in our divisions, as well as we have a grant currently running with the Department of Commerce. So, many of the things that you see throughout the strategic plan are directly tied to our deliverables for the City of Commerce, so that's another layer of accountability. The other piece is really wanting to center the voices of our community in our planning and practices, and as we continue to have opportunities for our community to, you know, voice their feedback and their needs, we want to continue to show them that we have put the things that they have already asked for into place. So, we want to make sure just that all of our efforts have certain accountability measures that we're able to go back to.
Thank you. Sharice, this is Dave Berger. I was gonna ask you about the ambassador committee, because I'm not familiar with that. Can you describe what the ambassador committee is and how it works?
Yes, absolutely. So, the ambassador committee is a volunteer committee. It meets once a month for about two hours at a time, and the idea behind the committee is, one, to get every level of the organization involved in the DEI work, and then also, again, centering those voices, right? So, as we're talking about things like workforce development or hiring and recruitment, we need to be sure that we are not just making plans based on what we think is a need, but based on what our firefighters and leaders have shared with us, that our needs for either their crew or for our community. So, one of the things that ambassadors are currently working on is developing CTE pathways for our local high schools. So, a CTE pathway is that college career technical programming, and what the ambassadors are working on right now is creating different pathways that high schoolers would be able to come into. It would be about like a wait, an eight-week program, and what they would do during that program is learn about the different opportunities within the fire service. So, there will be, you know, a firefighter track, an IT track, human resources, as well as some of our business operations divisions. And the goal is really just to, one, have qualified candidates as they become of age to possibly join our department. Two, it's that free marketing, right? They are sharing their experiences with their communities, their schools, their families, and then also a way for us to mentor and engage with our community. So, the ambassadors groups were, works on specific kind of strategies to get us to those strategic goals that we have in each of those three categories.
And you said that the committee's made up of people from all levels and all divisions, the opportunity to be on the committee from different divisions. Great, thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions so far?
Commissioner Fuller, the King County Fire Commissioners, Fire Chiefs Association has a DEI effort. Are we working with them or following what they're doing to?
Yes, absolutely.
Learn from them?
Yes, absolutely. So, we just recently participated in their DEI workshop, which is for potential firefighters coming into the service. So, we had a recruitment table there, as well as Dave V is deeply connected with the association, so he's been helping us build that partnership as well. I also engage with their monthly meetings, and, you know, we're sharing the things that are working for us, they're sharing some things that are working for them, and we're able to implement those into our practice as well. So, yes, already have a partnership and continuing to build a partnership, as well as engaging in some of the things that they have already created, like the diversity workshop and not reinventing the wheel.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
How are we measuring the success of our program?
Yes, so, we are still in the very beginning phases of our program and strategy, so, the way we'll do that is through data. The one that we have kind of in progress already is our training and development. So, we have had a leadership, inclusive leadership training opportunity for all of our civilian staff, which will next go to our firefighter staff. And the way we measure success is through feedback data, so after they complete a training, they are asked a series of maybe three to five questions, which include strategies that worked well for them, as well as opportunities for us to grow. The other way that it's measured is through kind of organizational assessments. We've done the IDI assessment as a team, so we're able to compare our IDI data from this season to the next time we do it, which will be in about a year. And again, we'll use those data points to make sure that our program is, programming is successful. And then, some pieces of the data, of course, is qualitative, right? So, it's a narrative, hearing from our community, hearing from our staff, as well as our leaders about, you know, culture shifts that they're seeing, what's working, what's not working, and being able to continuously readjust for the most success. Obviously, we'll collect data from our internship opportunities and things like that as they arise, but really staying focused on being able to look at the numbers and make sure that we're successful in our programming.
Sharice, this is Commissioner Berger again. On strategy two, your community outreach, I'm interested in knowing how you plan to go about creating these community listening sessions? Has there been any discussion about the how, how and when and where and all of that? Yeah?
Absolutely. So, there's a few different parts, right? The first part is wanting to invite community into us, which we have started to establish, so inviting them to come visit us at a station. So inviting them to come visit us at a station, ask questions, give feedback around different things in terms of community outreach or public education, resources and things they'd like to see from us as a department, as well as just opportunities to connect. The other thing is making sure that we target specific populations, so building those community partnerships with, um, with specific kind of organizations and communities within South King. So we've partnered with communities and school, Federal Way High Line, developing some listening sessions with their school outreach, cor- school outreach coordinators, excuse me. Um, and being able to really hear from our young people what they'd like to see in terms of opportunities for them within the fire service. As well as, uh, partnering with local community agencies that focus on community. For example, we met with MSC, which is the Multicultural Service Center last week. Um, they also have a series of kind of community listening sessions or community engagement opportunities. So we'll be partnering on, with them, um, to attend and gather information from some of those sessions as well.
Great, thank you.
Charisse, Mark Thompson again. Um, the, uh, the community listening sessions and stuff like that, do you have any, uh, plans or ideas to use any of our facilities to host some of those, uh, sessions?
Absolutely. So, um, bringing the community to us will be just as important as going to our community and vocalizing and meeting them where they're at, right? Um, and the idea behind using the stations is that not only do they have this opportunity to provide feedback, but they also get to see what South King Fire is all about, right? Um, and really be engaged in the day to day of our firefighters, um, which is an amazing story because they do great things every day. So definitely wanting to open up, you know, there's been some ideas about like pancake, uh, breakfasts and things like that. Um, so for sure, wanting to bring the community to us as well.
Charisse, you've conducted one already, have you not?
Yes, we have. But, you know, with the craziness of December, scheduling was difficult. Um, and we had light attendance, but we're definitely hoping to increase attendance in the future. Um, and I think the lesson that we learned too is first establishing some of those relationships and going into our community before asking them to come to us.
Are you, uh, on these listening sessions, whatever, are you, uh, are you taping them? So if somebody wanted to go and somebody wasn't there, uh, you'll say myself, if I wanted to go and listen to who called in, what comments, I could do so?
So it was in person, um, and we did not tape. We could consider that in the future. I also want to keep it as, you know, open as possible, so people are truthful without kind of, um, I don't know, fear of things being very public. But what we did do is take notes. Um, so of each of the questions asked, there was notes taken based on the responses by our community, so we could definitely share those notes.
Strategy four, community outreach. What does that mean?
Yeah, so what this means is professional development, right? So when we think of professional development, often things we think of kind of those core competencies that it takes to show up as a firefighter. But this is taking it one step further and really building some capacity around community, right? So what it looks like to engage with those from a different community than yours. Um, establishing some more like common language and practices. So every time someone engages with a South King firefighter, this is kind of what they could expect. Um, so it's focusing on like anti-bias training or, you know, connecting with communities of color or connecting with young people. Or, um, you know, working with clients that are underserved, like our homeless population, for example, or our immigrant population. So it's just deepening our cultural competency to be able to work with all of the communities that we serve in South King.
Who, who is, who is feeding the train? Community building training?
Yeah, so it is a kind of conjunction of things. So as, um, the Workforce Development Program Manager and with my background in Masters in Education, I build some training and development tools. The other pieces obviously are bringing in experts. For example, we have a sexual harassment training coming up. Um, and we're bringing in a lawyer who is gonna lead us through that one. We have a mental health training coming up and we're bringing in Dr. Pierce, which is a trauma therapist that's well known in the Pacific Northwest. So it's a combination of using our internal talent, um, which we have a lot of, right, ranging from the op side to also the firefighter side. So wanting to build some of those internal structures and really using our strengths and our talents, our talents that we already have as a department. And then also bringing in, um, e- experts in the field to engage in our training as well. So it's a mix.
Charisse, what's the, uh, what's the target age group you're looking at in this program?
The tar- I'm sorry, you cut up a little bit. The target date I'm looking at.
Target age group from the lower end to the upper end?
Sure, I understand the question. So the target date to start would be that we already started. Um, the end of the grant is in June of 2023. Um, and our planning, this specific strategic plan goes out for the next two years. So some of the pieces are already in play. Um, and then some of them are coming up in the new year. So it's a two-year strategic plan with various parts happening now.
I was asking you, what's the target age group from the lower end to the upper end of the program? Age.
Are you talking about community outreach in the community?
No, the people that were encouraging to participate, who, what are the targets, yeah?
Did you get that question, Charisse?
Yeah, so I think, um, you know, the targets are various. The specific community outreach programs that are not focused on youth, so not in the school, would be anybody that we serve in our community, specifically the adults. Um, I think age group would range anywhere from eighteen to, you know, however old people are in our community are. Um, and obviously they have different needs. Um, so wanting to have a really broad picture of that feedback. And then the youth sessions are specific to kind of what they would like to see in that college and career realm as well as public education. Um, but since we do do some K-12 initiatives as far as, you know, reading and career development, we really do want to be able to center all voices within our community. So the target of the listening sessions will range throughout the year.
Sounds good. Charisse, a follow-up question to Commissioner Thompson's question about age. Are we, are we targeting, um, the growing senior population by contacting the various senior facilities? Uh, they have kind of unique needs, maybe special needs, uh, that fire department may be able to respond to. Have you reached out to, to them?
Yes, great question. Um, Crosson and I are in the process of developing a plan with our new FMO positions coming open and, um, you know, some more opportunity to, you know, have the workload accomplished. Um, since we know that those populations utilize us most frequently, it really is important for us to have their feedback. So we are in the process of developing some opportunities for us to partner with the commercial ones that we serve the most often. Um, so good question, and yes, we are working on it.
Good, thank you.
Uh, this, Commissioner Gates, uh, on, on your, on the page on recruitment and hiring, strategy four, expand mental health awareness. Uh, what are we talking about there? Are you talking about wanting all of our members to know what mental health programs are available to them?
Yeah, so that's part of it, right? So in terms of retention, we know that retention is directly linked to employees' overall happiness. Um, and part of that is mental health, right? So we know that our firefighters experience a lot of trauma. Um, and they are supporting a lot of trauma within the community. So wanting to ensure that they know what's available to them, wanting to make sure that what we do have currently available to them is accessible and, um, effective. And then also wanting to just, again, in terms of that workforce development and training, beef up some of our, um, skills, knowledge and awareness around mental health in general to both support our own coping strategies as we engage with trauma, as well as when we engage with community members that are experiencing that trauma. So things like, um, you know, secondary trauma and compassion fatigue and burnout. Um, and then again, those healthy coping strategies. So one of the strategies within strategy four is having Dr. Pierce come in, um, and lead that health awareness training.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have any questions, comments?
Since we're into this pretty thoroughly, let me ask one last question. On that same list, under recruitment, hiring and retention, the very last strategy, could you explain that? Uh, what that means, because it's really not clear to me.
Yes, so, um, again, similar to the ambassadors, right, wanting to create, um, groups that involve community as well as our ops team and our firefighter staff, um, working on specific areas. So let's say, you know, for example, the DEI group that is working on our public education stance and building those partnerships. So different groups, affinity groups, information sharing groups, focus groups, um, as well as groups that are focused on action and resources. So think of it as like building a PTA, right, but for the fire service and wanting to make sure we have different groups that are connected and helping us cultivate some of this work. So, uh, we're not doing it all on our own. So for-
Strategies, uh, here that look really good, but what is the timeline? Um, give a timeline that is attached to those.
Yes, so one of the biggest timelines that's attached is our Department of Commerce grants timeline. So that one's coming up here. The first one is coming up January fifteenth, um, and then the last one's coming up on June of 2023. Um, obviously, some of our timelines has changed with the challenges in hiring and recruiting and the mandate, um, and things like that. So some of our timelines have been either paused or are in the process of being reorganized due to, um, you know, different challenges that we're coming up against. The timeline for training is once a quarter. So we completed our first one on December eighth, which was the inclusive leadership training. Coming up, we have foundations of equity, systems of oppression, the mental health training, and then the sexual harassment training. Um, other than that, we want to have a employee portal up and running by that June date, which would be those SharePoint resources. So it's basically just an online classroom of training opportunities that anybody within the department can utilize. Um, and then the community outreach efforts and then recruitment really focus on when we're able to get our new hiring timeline down, which we are getting closer to.
This, Mr. Gates, a question in the back on the community listening sessions. Um, if we wanted, if the commissioners wanted to listen in, you know, can we or will we go when they're gonna be?
Absolutely. I'm happy to, uh, forward those invites for the ones that are upcoming.
I would encourage the, the members of the board to be there. You just have to watch the numbers, of course.
That could be my next question.
Yeah, unless you want to make it a public meeting and just let everybody come in, but I think it's a really good idea for the commissioners in the apartment. We can put it on our calendar. Yeah, Charisse can get those dates. I don't know if you've got them scheduled yet, but we can get those to the board pretty easily.
Yes, absolutely.
Dave, how, how will this be integrated into the larger strategic bridge, bridge plan? Workforce development is one of the categories, right?
Yeah, we have to get, we have to find the appropriate category of the four and get it going. I don't know. I don't know that it will be rolled in, in its entirety because we're a little further ahead with that than this is, but there's certainly going to be some intersecting points that we can get. As Charisse brings us online a little more, we have to at least make an opening for it in, in those pillars and allow it to be integrated. So I can't tell you exactly how it, I would rely more on Seth for that input. Um, but I think it, it does probably, I see it as being a part of internal communications perhaps. Um, and maybe leadership, but, uh-
Integration process.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not something.
Accountability as well.
No, I, I don't think it's a good idea to have it standalone.
So what's the, what's the plan when the grant runs out to continue the great work?
And well, the plan is to hang on to Charisse because she knows what she's doing. So the grant, I believe, is funded through twenty-five. Four, it expires in twenty-five, right?
So their grant, this current grant is, um, budgeted through 2023, but yes, we have the opportunity to extend to twenty-four and twenty-five and actually beyond. So we're focusing heavily on, um, documentation and execution of those deliverables and really, um, hoping for that continued funding. The partnership.
The one thing that I would say here is Charisse has taken this on, it's brand new for us. And she's done a wonderful job, and I think we, we're not at the end stage yet. We're, we're still rolling this out, or she is, and, um, I commend her for it. Um, but the goal is not to let it go away, it's to enhance it, for sure. Very good. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Charisse. Call us next year, okay?
Ha, ha, I appreciate it.
Think you're serious. All right. Are we on to the, uh, December budget?
Yes, so Joe was off this evening. Kelsey, I'm sure is waiting in the wings to give us all the financial updates that we need to have. Kelsey, are you out there?
Yep, I'm here.
Have at it.
Okie dokie. So this month, we have our mid-month facilities totaling ninety-five thousand, three hundred and six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Accounts payable warrants totaling one million, five hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Our payroll direct deposit totaling one million, seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Our payroll warrants for twenty-three individuals totaling thirty-eight thousand, fourteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Our payroll taxes totaling four hundred fifty thousand, five hundred twenty dollars and ninety-nine cents. Our medical claims processed as of December thirteenth totaling one hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. So the total approval for tonight is four million, seventy-two thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, which brings us to ninety-six point six percent of budget. So we are under budget three point four percent. However, um, the final report will come out after January.
All right, um, I have a motion and a second to approve vouchers.
Chairman, I have move approval of the vouchers.
I second the motion.
Motion's been being seconded to approve vouchers. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor of approving vouchers, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, at this point, the board is going to adjourn into executive session. For our CW two dot three, we got one P M, one G to evaluate qualifications of an applicant to public employment or to review the performance of a public employee. Action may or may not have to take it after the executive session. We anticipate the executive session lasting for fifteen minutes. At this time, uh, joining the board in executive session will be Chief Lieutenant Captain, Executive Director Gamm, Assistant Chief Ben Balkenberg, and Division, Division Chief Smith. At this time, we will recess for five minutes to get everyone transferred into executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will take a two-minute recess to get everyone. At the end of the executive session, we will take a two-minute recess to get everyone transferred back over to special people.